Valerie. Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hello?
Valerie? Hello?
Hi.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, hang on, we're still having a little bit of difficulty getting the video on.
Well, can they hear me from here?
Yeah.
Carrie Valerie, it's Kim.
Okay, that... Hey Pamela, hi.
It's Kim.
Okay. Oh, hi Kim.
Hi.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was on the closed session, but for some reason, nobody could hear me. I was trying to say something, but I don't know. I'm on an old computer, I'm gonna have to switch to the new one.
Yeah, I had to work from home because my office computer doesn't have a camera.
Yeah, well, I'm trying not to be seen.
Probably a good start.
But I don't know how to... How do you type your name in? I don't... How do you do that?
At the top, you'll see where it has like your mute and start video. You'll see participants. When this says participants, if you go down, you'll see one that's labeled "me", and you can type your name in there.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'm trying to appear a person from the bug meeting. Hello?
You don't hear us?
Valerie?
Yes, we can hear you guys. We can hear you. Can you hear any panelists?
It's Kevin, I can hear.
This is Valerie, I can hear.
This is Kim as well, but there's no video function. I mean, I can see you, but when I try to turn mine on, it says that it's been disabled.
Hillary, and everyone, we hear you guys.
Oh.
Hi Grace, this is Lorena.
Hillary, they're back on now.
Okay, so I need that link is the same link. Okay, I'll just click onto that. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lorena.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Hillary, I can't hear you.
This is Valerie, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Valerie.
Okay.
Valerie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hi, this is Donna from Tech Connect Support. Is captions in the room? Excuse me, is Denzel in the room? When Denzel returns to the room, he is the only person that can assign the captioner to type captions.
Okay, everybody, we think we have fixed this here. Can board members here hear us right now?
I'm sorry, Tom.
He'll be able to hear you guys.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Can members of the... Any members of the public who are on the line, can you hear us? If anyone's there, anybody from the academic senate or elsewhere?
This is Keith, I can hear you.
Okay, great. All right, I think we finally have this. Thank you for the staff. I apologize for the technical difficulties. This was done on very short notice, and I expect we'll get it better if we have to continue to do it. But thanks to all the technical folks who've been working so hard on this, I appreciate it. I... The first thing I need to do is report out on the executive session. The board voted unanimously to reject a tort claim submitted to CalBright, and that's the action that we took. So next up is the president's report. I want to first let everyone know that I was reappointed to the board of governors by Governor Newsom over the weekend, sworn in this morning, and so you're stuck with me for another six years. Unfortunately, Jeff Baume has not been reappointed, and he is no longer on the board. We will try and do something with Jeff at some future time when we're all together and he's available to come with us to thank him for his many years of service on the board. The... I think that the coronavirus situation certainly demonstrates the need for a higher capability and online instruction for the community college system, and we're hopeful that CalBright can demonstrate or can be a part of the solution to improving that technology for the entire community college system, as well as the distributed workforce model that CalBright uses, which is very helpful today. The only other thing I wanted to report on was that we had our hearing in front of the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, and actually since the last full board meeting, we also had a meeting of the Senate, State Senate Oversight Committee. And both of those hearings were... Included testimony that was critical of CalBright. Chancellor Oakley and I spoke and answered questions for two hours at the Senate Oversight Committee hearing, and we had a very brief... Or I had a very brief moment to speak at the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. The outcome of all that is that we're going to continue to work very closely with the legislature to try and address the concerns of them and various constituencies who are involved in this issue. The Joint Legislative Audit Committee did vote to do an audit of CalBright, but it wouldn't start until after the budget is adopted. So that gives us some time to continue to work through the kinks in the startup operation and show some results by the time an audit will begin. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ajia for the first CEO's report.
Thank you. I wanted to begin by thanking President Epstein and Vice President Haynes and the full Board of Trustees for the opportunity to take on this very important role. I appreciate the challenge and am excited by the opportunity to lead a very diverse organization that is at the helm of providing a leading edge on workforce education, and that's uniquely focused on the needs of working learners across California, while also focusing on building greater connectivity to support these learners system-wide. First, an update on CalBright's efforts to respond to the COVID-19 epidemic pandemic. The college is closely tracking efforts at the state level to manage the public health issues. We drafted and are currently guided by an emergency preparedness plan focused on infectious disease and have begun implementing appropriate measures, including communication to students and employees in accordance with that plan. We are mandating that each employee work from home and have canceled, rescheduled, or moved to video conferencing all nonessential meetings with external stakeholders. As you know, much of our team lives and works across California and have become accustomed to working in this kind of distributed staffing model, and that has also helped us minimize disruption to CalBright operations. While the challenge is different, as our employees and our learners are also navigating additional stress in their communities presented by things like childcare needs with school closures and mental health needs, we are going to continue to identify ways to support folks. In the coming days and weeks, we will also be seeking input from relevant stakeholders prior to finalizing the draft plan and also be developing a more comprehensive plan across other emergency categories. In this time that we find ourselves stricken with a new challenge around keeping our communities healthy and safe, we're also seeing greater importance of new and robust solutions that are extending beyond what we have in place today. We see the need to grow our capacity of the college and the system to be able to rapidly respond to the needs of our communities in ways that can minimize education disruption while continuing to regard for the health and safety of those at our colleges. That remains true for both this pandemic response and more so for the growing challenge of the rapid economic shift that we're going to be facing going forward. In the short time since being appointed by the board, I have begun to meet with key members of our executive team and staff throughout the organization to better understand CalBright's current operations. I will just say that I am truly excited by the talent and dedication of the CalBright team. Their commitment is evident in their tireless efforts to create and improve a high-quality educational experience and a support experience for the college's inaugural cohort and for future cohorts of CalBright learners. The hard work of this team is why I think we were able to make such remarkable progress towards the college's initial launch, and it's also why I feel very confident that we'll be able to use key insights generated from the efforts to date to make any necessary course corrections in a way that's timely and resolute to best position the college to achieve its statutory objectives and responsibilities to the state. As I begin to meet with individuals at the college, I've also been focusing time on external stakeholders and will be scheduling time to increase outreach to key system constituents, and I look forward to reaching out in the next few weeks to shore up our relationships with those advocates and partners who have been longstanding supporters of CalBright from the beginning, as well as opening the doors to new relationships and those who want to share in the purpose and value of strengthening these types of opportunities for California's workers. I'm going to pause here also to send my sincere thanks to Sakari Morrison, who has been both a critical part of CalBright and an instrumental part of my transition. I deeply and personally appreciate her willingness to see me through my start at CalBright prior to pursuing her exciting new opportunity at Facebook. While she is going to be missed throughout the organization, I also want to share that the legacy that she's left by her efforts to strengthen the organization and also to expand the footprint of the college across external stakeholders and in the halls of the Capitol will continue, and we will plan to open the search for her position as well as the Director of Government Relations in the coming weeks. I'm also spending a considerable amount of time in Sacramento to introduce myself to key members of the legislature and their staff to provide needed clarity on CalBright's efforts and current and future and to ensure an open and accurate dialogue surrounding the need for the college. We will continue to quickly monitor legislative developments in the budget and the legislative process, including upcoming hearings. Internal to the organization, we are helping take steps over the course of the next several weeks to build and support necessary functions for the college to grow. A lot of that is stemming from our current efforts with the beta cohort of learners. We're in the process, for example, of rolling out a significant upgrade to our backend infrastructure for supporting learners, and that will help us track progress and improve student experience and engagement with employers. The learning and instruction and learning services teams and functions across the college are working more collaboratively to examine key learner touchpoints, find where we can strengthen both our academic and other supports for learners to enhance persistence and completion, and also to identify the kinds of gaps that we'll need to address going forward. Similarly, our marketing outreach and communications team are examining how we can understand interests of different diverse communities of learners so that we can better and more effectively focus our marketing and communication efforts to be responsive to the needs of those communities. And we are refocusing efforts of the employer partnership team towards synthesizing insights from extensive conversations to date with employers to really to better understand how we can support the transition of CalBright learners into the labor market. Nick and company have been at work strengthening and building our financing, administration, and human resources infrastructure, and we have brought on a small team of human rights... Human resource consultants. I'm sure they're advocates of human rights as well, with deep expertise in community colleges to provide temporary support until we can hire a permanent director of human resources. These efforts really bring us to our high priority focus areas, including the hiring of the college's first full-time faculty that we are targeting for May under a new and improved process accomplished that could not have been accomplished without the advice and support of the statewide academic senate. Combined, these efforts will also help set us up to appropriately develop and grow the organization and will also support preparation for extensive staffing and resources that will be required to manage... that will be required to manage the college's legislative audit beginning this summer. And finally, my office has been setting up time for me to spend more time with each of you. Some of you I know from my work on the advance team at the college, others of you I will just be getting to know now. And I really look forward to meeting with you virtually if necessary to hear your perspectives on the college and hopefully will connect in person very soon. I will stop there. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Ajia. And in all of this, all these distractions this morning, I forgot to mention one of the most important things that I meant to say too, which was to also thank Sakari Morrison for her outstanding work. I had the opportunity to work very closely with her on a number of legislative and communications efforts, and her work in many cases was heroic in filling any number of gaps with high-quality advocacy on our behalf and working many, many, many hours through the day and night to make sure that we were prepared for the various legislative activities that we were engaged in, and she will be storling this. And I hope sometime in the future the Board can re-congregate and give Sakari a send-off that she deserves. I don't think we'd be in nearly as good a position today without her tireless and effective work. So thank you, Sakari. With that, we will move into the consent agenda. The first item is the, item 2.1, the non-executive positions and appointments. It's presented by Nick Schweitzer.
Sure. Good morning, President Calwoker Menon, Vice President Epstein, Vice President Haynes. Nick Schweitzer, Chief Financial and Administrative Officer. So we have on your consent agenda an item to approve five new non-exec classifications and four appointments, including one substitute employee. I can provide a more detailed presentation, but this is on consent and we've heard no request for removal from consent. So we request approval via consent agenda.
Does any Board member have any interest in removing this item from consent? Okay, with that, we'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval. This is Pam Haynes.
Bill Rawlings, second.
Okay, Rawlings, I think beat Alguinaldo to the punch there. Okay, the, oh, is there any public comment? Does anyone who's on the Zoom meeting or on the call have any comment they'd like to make about this item? Okay, hearing none. Please call the roll.
Hildy Garret Alguinaldo?
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Corillo?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Pam Hayne?
Aye.
Kevin Hall? Julina Grande?
Sorry, it's Kevin Hall. I had it on mute. I'm sorry. Aye.
Thank you. Julina Grande? Julina? On mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Llosa Laloma? And Alexis Aragosa?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next item is action item 3.1, the CCLC Board Election. Ajia?
Thank you, President Epstein. The issue at hand is, as a member of the League College Board of Trustees is entitled to submit one ballot for the upcoming election. The purpose of this item is to recommend authorization of an individual to vote on behalf of the college. In your attachments, you'll see the current listed candidates on the ballot.
Okay, let me provide a little information, and perhaps Vice President Haynes will want to. But as I understand it, Calbright gets to vote for the CCLC trustee board, and there are nine seats up for reelection. There are more than nine candidates. So it's a competitive election. One of the members of the Board who's up for reelection is our own Vice President Haynes. And so this election has to, we have to submit our ballot in April. And so this item, we are not going to consider who to vote for. But we're, I'm going to ask the Board to authorize me to make the selection of which of the trustees on the
Oh, my God.
On the Board. And so I just wanted to ask the Board to authorize me to do that rather than have to have a lengthy evaluation of all the candidates for the CCLC Board among all of us. So with that, it's open for discussion?
Can you hear me? This is Pam Haynes?
We can.
Oh, good. Okay, good. So let me make certain that this actually needs, I realize there may be some time issues, but this, the candidate's information can be found on the League's website. And each of the individuals that have been listed have an application in which they, you can, you know their, you can find out what their background is, as well as there are about three questions that they are asked. And so it's supposed to be a deliberative discussion relative to a board meeting. It is an interesting aspect that one individual, that one individual may have more information than another. But it is a discussion that happens among the Board members as opposed to in a public setting. So I have a little bit of concern about the complete delegation to the President.
Okay, I'm going to ask Namita to speak to this issue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Haynes. The bottom line is, this is a rote decision-making process that is given generally to an individual in the system. So to the extent the issues that Vice President Haynes is raising around the qualifications and the process by which this list of 12 has been curated, I mean, those are all very legitimate points, but it is, the action is to designate an individual who will make the vote or the decision on behalf of Calbright. That does not then preclude any conversations that the designated individual can have with other members of the community college family or community college system to gauge the qualifications of the curated list. But this is just a simple designation of the person to fill out the bubble or pull the lever or however the mail-in ballot works. It is just to designate a person who would do that on behalf of Calbright.
So I have a follow-up question, Namita, and that is, if there are individuals on the Board of Trustees, do we, does the, it's, does the Brown Act preclude more than one trustee sharing their insights with the designated person?
So right now, the action is around the designation of the person. Should the Board want to have a subsequent discussion regarding the qualifications of the nominees and who the designated individual should vote for on behalf of the college? That could be part of an executive committee, you know, discussion. And that's what, you're right, the designated individual, if they are an appointed, I'm sorry, if they are a member of the Board of Trustees, and Tom is recommending that he be the designated person, he should not be having individual conversations because that would be a violation of the Brown Act. But to the extent that there is a subsequent conversation around who the Calbright College ought to vote for, that could be the subject of a properly agendized item as part of the next executive committee meeting. Or it could also be a special meeting that could be called just for that purpose. And to be exact, one more thing. Governor has allowed, the Governor has signed an executive order that is allowing board meetings to be held remotely. And so this idea that we need to have to wait until the next scheduled executive session to have that discussion, we do have now the option of scheduling a special board meeting without people needing to travel because it could be a remote discussion.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification because I, what, I did not, I did not understand that this is just being moved over to another meeting for the decision around who's, who's going to be selected. Am I correct? In other words, this is sort of being postponed until we have an executive meeting or a special meeting? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it that way. I was kind of following the lead of our council. Let's make, I guess what I would seek is a motion that would, that makes, I guess it could make me or Ajia, I mean, we're talking about filling out a form. Is that what we're talking about? Well, I'll tell you what, let's, let's appoint, then I would suggest appointing Ajia the one to fill out the form. And then at the next executive committee meeting, that the members of that committee have an opportunity to weigh in with whom they think we should, we should support. I think I may take the liberty of suggesting, maybe working with the Vice President, although there is a bit of a conflict of interest, I believe, there on some of the, and so that we will present a slate of the people that we think would make the right choice for Calbright to support in the election, and we'll vote on that at the next executive committee meeting. So before we have a motion, is there any public comment on this issue? Anyone on the Zoom meeting or on the phone? Okay, so then I guess I'd be seeking a motion to authorize Ajia to be the point person to submit our form and that the executive committee will recommend a slate of candidates at the next meeting and vote on a slate of candidates at the next meeting.
Also move, it's Jennifer.
I'll second this, Bill.
Bill, again flipped in and had ability, twice now.
I don't know how you're doing that, Bill.
Okay, please call the roll.
Hildy Garret Alguinaldo?
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Corillo?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Julina Grande?
Aye.
Pam Hayne?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Alexis Aragosa?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Onto item 5.1, Government Relations and Advocacy RFP.
Yes, thank you. This is Nick Schweitzer again. Requesting approval of a one-year contract with Sacramento Advocates not to exceed $120,000. Calbright needs a qualified, experienced firm to provide their government relations and advocacy services critical in, you know, representing Calbright and our students' interests in the legislature and executive branch offices. We request, we issued the request for proposals for this back in January, notified almost 40 firms. We had four responsive proposals. We had a subject matter team that evaluated the proposals based on the criteria that was identified in the RFP. Sacramento Advocates was selected by the team as the best fit for our needs and also the lowest bidder of all the proposals we received. They are one of the most prominent firms in California. Their team has over 90 years of legislative and advocacy experience. So again, we're recommending approval of this contract. If folks have any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there any public comment? Anyone from the Zoom call like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none.
Oh, hi, Tom. This is Felicia. I just wanted to ask a question. Has this firm worked before with education, higher education institutions? I'm sorry if I missed that. Just wanted to add something you all learned.
So they've actually been working with us for a few months on a separate contract. They also have experience working with other higher education institutions. And they have, one of the, one of the firm's members is actually on the UC Board of Regents. So they've got pretty extensive experience in higher ed.
Gareth Elliott is the principal, who has been working with us in the past and is a member of the Board of Regents and Governor Brown's former legislative secretary.
They also represent the School Boards Association. Very useful, relevant.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other comments? Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion.
Don't move. This is Hildy. Ha ha, Bill.
Okay, we got a motion second. Please call the roll.
Hildy Garret Alguinaldo?
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Corillo?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Julina Grande?
Aye.
Pam Hayne?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Jennifer Perry?
Aye.
Kim Perigo?
Aye.
Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Alma Salazar?
Aye.
Alexis Aragosa?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. That's it for the action agenda. Okay, motion carries, that's it for the action agenda. Move on to information and report, the budget process. Before we do this, Nick is going to be talking, have you all heard him? Well, I know he's not on camera, I wonder if maybe Nick should move up here and show your face to the crowd.
All right, can we get, I guess the folks probably won't see me because we'll have the slide deck up, right? But that's all right. Can you get the slide deck up? Okay. All right, great. Okay, so if we can go to the first slide, the budget process, okay, great, budget, board policy. So your board policy requires that we provide a schedule to the board by March of each year. We're a couple, a couple of weeks late on that. But this is, this is, this presentation is in meeting with that board policy and, you know, laying out the schedule for the board and also beginning to discuss how we're going to go about developing next year, next year's budget and getting reaction from you on that. So we can go to the next slide. So the schedule, so of course, today's meeting is the meeting on the, on the budget guidance and schedule. After this meeting, we will engage with the executive team and begin working on the inputs and goals and other things that go into developing the budget. We are also, at the same time, forming a budget advisory committee that will consist of representatives from faculty, classified representatives, administrators. We'll work with our student representatives to have some student voice on the committee as well. So we'll begin holding meetings of the, of this budget advisory committee to provide input and advice on the budget development, the inputs and goals that go into the development and also the actual draft budget that is developed from those inputs and goals. And then with, with the goal of wrapping that up and having a draft budget, ready for the board to review and provide input in at their May meeting. We'll have adoption of a tentative budget in June. So it's, it's a tentative budget because we need the, see the state's budget, which generally gets wrapped up at the end of the June in order to finalize it. So in July, we will revise the budget based on what's in the state's budget, which hopefully is nothing, no change from what the Governor presented at, in his budget. There are 20 million in funding and no other changes. So then we'll have a required public hearing in July and then we'll have the final budget adoption in August. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this is just in setting up, you know, the discussion, development of the budget, just to, this outlines some of our, you know, what we've accomplished to date in terms of the goals that were laid out for us in the legislation. Obviously, we've, you know, we've begun enrolling learners, we've got the three program pathways in place, you know, we've already started on implementing an accreditation plan that was presented to you a couple of months ago. And then also, we've begun executing on an outreach plan to reach out to our learners and enroll them in our program. But can you go to the next slide, please? So we've got a couple more milestones that are laid out in the statute. By July 2021, we're, need to have an additional three program pathways and have applied for accreditation. And then by July 1, 2023, we're required to have an additional 10, 10 program pathways. If I can go to the next slide, please? Okay, so also wanted to remind folks and sort of said as, as another framing for how we're going about budget development, these are the statutory goals that were laid out for us in the implementing legislation. Many of these that, you know, we've already started on, certainly in terms of creating the pathways. We're beginning to work on some of the other areas, you know, around the, the student experience and the student supports, redesigning transcripts, looking at apprenticeship or work-based learning programs, other things, you know, maybe we haven't really looked at yet that we may, may, may consider in the future based on priorities such as the research and development unit. If I can go to the next slide, please? Then some other important goals that we need to keep in mind that were in the legislation, we're to be able to distribute the advances and the resources that we develop to community colleges throughout the system, you know, add content and courses and pathways to the online education initiative, Common Course Management Platform, also, you know, sharing the student supports that we develop also through the system and through the online education initiative. And then, you know, enhance student-wide, system-wide student success using our, you know, teaching and student support methodologies and technologies for purposes of important professional development throughout the system. So these are, these are some of the goals that we will be keeping in mind as we, you know, start through the budget development process. If I can go to the next slide, please? So this lays out some of the factors in terms of building the budget. Of course, we want to identify those inputs, you know, things like funding projections, enrollment projections, things like that. But even more importantly, you know, we need to, you know, take the goals that, that we have, you know, and start looking at, and some of this is really happening already with President Tal Walker Menon's, you know, review of current college operations. You know, the board president and the rest of the board asked her to do a top-to-bond review of the college and that's something she's doing now. And we're also looking at bringing in some support to do that. So certainly, you know, a critical thing is looking at those goals and taking, getting feedback from, from our stakeholders and our students and, you know, take the learnings that we are getting from the current cohort and figure out where the gaps are, you know, strategize how to close those gaps and put resources behind those strategies. If I can go to the next slide, please? So in terms of looking at our resources and how we, how we fund the budget and fund those, those strategies and reach our goals, we've got the 20 million ongoing to use. This slide lists some of the uses of that money. It's, you know, nothing too out of the ordinary in that list for a community college district. If I can go to the next slide, please? But more importantly, something to keep in mind in terms of the ongoing fund is that really when we're fully staffed, approximately 80% of that funding will go to employee salaries and benefits. So in terms of how we're allocating the one-time funds to address our, the gaps and reach our goals, we're really looking at the organization of Cal-Right as part of the top-to-bond review, looking at where the needs are in terms of staffing.
I still don't have my panelist access codes for the bottom.
Yeah. So certainly look at, prioritizing looking at how we're staffing Cal-Right for the, in terms of how we're allocating the ongoing funds. If I can go to the next slide, please? So the one-time funds, again, this is, this is what is sort of called for in the statute, but it's not, it's not limited to these things. Certainly, capital investments in technology, research development unit, partnerships with other colleges or libraries, other institutions with physical presidents to provide in-person support, development of many of our core functions, which is currently ongoing, accreditation and scaling efforts to build this up over the seven-year period or what's called for in, as possible uses, but they're certainly not, not limited to those. If I can go to the next slide, please? So looking at the one-time, you know, one-time funding, certainly there'll be more flexibility in terms of the one-time funding. We'll certainly want to revisit how we allocated the one-time funding in this year's budget. As you know, based on my presentation last month, much of that funding has not been expended yet. And we'll want to also consider additional ways that we can allocate that money to meet our statutory goals that are called for in the, in the legislation. So with that, I'd, you know, like to take any questions or any input from, from board members.
Okay, any, any board member questions?
So, so this is Pam. Thanks so much for that presentation. And I, and I realize that you've, you've given us the nuts and bolts and it's, that's absolutely important and we absolutely need it. But in terms of the actual document, as it will be expressed both as a public document and then one that is going to be presented online because indeed it is a public document, usually from my experience, at least with community colleges, there is at the beginning of that, that budget document, an expression or summary of who, who the community college is, who it serves, what are its goals, aspirations and to what extent some of its strategies. And that becomes the foundational piece of it as one looks at the, looks at the actual budget. And I just want to make certain that that will be included in the final document.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, last year's budget was, of course, you know, not, not, you know, given our, you know, where we were in startup, you know, it's not what you normally see for, you know, a community college district or really any public entity will certainly seek to have a budget document that, you know, provides more, more, more background and has a, you know, a good summary, you know, of, of the college, its mission, its goals, the, you know, where we're hoping to take it, you know, to provide context for, you know, all the numbers that will be laid out in the budget.
Perfect, thank you.
Any, any other board member comments? Okay, we have a public comment. Eric Calla Dumanji.
Good morning, I'm hoping that you can hear me.
We can.
Okay, this is Eric Calli-Meggi, I'm the Community College Association President, affiliate of CTA. I'm speaking to you today about half a mile north of you in Sacramento Grand. Things are moving quite quickly, as I'm sure that you're aware with the response to coronavirus. And I do want to encourage the board to provide direction on different income level sources. The presentation basically assumes 20 million ongoing, the 100 million, of course, already has been in Cal-Right's coffers for some time. But I do want to make certain that the, the board considers the possibilities that their income may not in fact be 20 million this next year. I am seeing a remarkable drop in taxable services in this area already.
Okay, thank you. Any other board or public comment? Okay. Okay, next up is the report on contracts and purchases, item 6.2.
Sorry, thank you, Nick Schweitzer again. So this is the standard monthly item, providing transparency in the, with the purchases and contracts signed in the past month, and this is for February. You know, financial activity continues to be reduced. I know I've been saying that for last, that, you know, last three months. But as, as we continue to transition leadership and the, you know, the top-to-bond review proceeds, we are still, you know, you know, within a reduced, reduced financial activity. Most of the contracts you will see there are really just extensions of existing contracts or contracts that, that the board had approved at a previous meeting. In terms of purchases, you know, the leases and telecommunications, you'd be the highest individual purchases, you know, and then beyond that, most of the other purchases are really just month-to-month payments for various software licenses. I'll also, you know, note that we continue to, continue to do advertising and outreach through social media, although that, that is limited. And as you know, approved a contract a couple of months ago with a media firm that we're working to bring online in the next couple of months. Aside from that, no other, no other significant things to note, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Any comments from the board, any questions? Any public comments or questions? Eric Calla Dumanji again?
This is Eric Calli-Meggi, CCA President again. On the reports, I note that there are eight professional experts in academic specialties as well as a learner advocate and one other, a success coach, which I think are faculty positions. Those contracts are listed as running until either June or October. I very much hope that the board will encourage administration to move faster than June or October with regards to full-time faculty. October with regards to full-time faculty hires. I have heard on multiple occasions that Calbright intends to have a full-time faculty that would then be hopefully unionized by one of the local unions, perhaps mine, but we need the full-time faculty to be hired first, so I do encourage Calbright to go out and seek positions and hire full-time faculty.
Thank you very much, that has, that has definitely been a high priority for quite some time now. Any other public or board comments? Okay, that gets us to the end of the fastest meeting we've ever had, slightly technical difficulty. Is, is time for a public forum, are there any public comments in the public forum? Hearing none, the meeting of the Calbright Board of Trustees is adjourned. For those of you who are on the Board of Governors, which is everybody, we will reconvene around, I think it's one, we also will have a brief closed session as part of that meeting.